Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Nashua City Planning Board of April 12, 2018. Mr. Secretary can have a roll call.
Yes. Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson.
President.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Barley.
Here.
Edward Weber.
Here.
Alderman David Tenzel.
Here.
Alderman Mary Ann Mazzalik. Steve DuCrane.
Present.
Dan Kelly.
Here.
David Robbins. Jerry Repucci.
Here.
Maggie Harper. John McGinnis. Here in spirit. We'd like the audience and the members here rise for a moment of silence for our Alderman. Please. Thank you. Thanks, Ed.
Thanks, Ed. Okay, so we have in front of us the minutes from the March 29, 2018 meeting. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at those and willing to make a motion or indicate whether there's any amendments needed? Mr. Repucci?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Motion by Mr. Repucci to accept the minutes as written. A second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Extentions.
Yeah, just hold your hands up so Ed can get it. Get it in?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. Communications, Roger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board. There are no communications tonight. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
A rarity.
Yeah, exactly. Report of Chairman and Committee Liaison, Dan, Ed, you.
Yeah, I'd like to report on NRPC. The NRPC hosted the 35th Annual Forum on March 29. Title was "The Economic Prosperity, Employment, and Housing." Speakers were Russ Thebow, Applied Economics Research, Kelly Dunn, BAE, John Stabile, the Stabile Companies, and Ben Frost from the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. The meeting was well attended. As a matter of fact, I think there was a quorum of aldermen there. They could have had their own special meeting. The focus, of course, is on housing, how to pay for it, and our lack of. We're in dire need of affordable housing here in the state, Nashua in particular. I would recommend the next time NRPC has one of these, and they have it every year, that we seriously consider going to it. Well worthwhile. Speakers are good and knowledgeable.
The only problem, we had a planning board meeting that night.
Yeah, we did.
Was there a planning board meeting that night?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Ed?
I want to say that I attended that also, and I have nothing for HDC. But I attended it, and I also did the video. It will be available on their website, and it's not a long, long video, and it's very reasonable to watch it and to... It's not on there now. It's going to take a little bit for them to do it, but well worth it to take a look at it.
I do want to add that the meeting overran by about 45 minutes because of the enthusiasm of the topic and the speakers.
Okay, great.
That's not unusual for an RP sponsored thing, so I encourage you... Hopefully, we can work it out so it's not out of planning board meeting next time.
All right. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and take this meeting into executive session. I'm going to read through the procedure of the meeting. So, how this is going to work is going to be after a legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision, I read, the board will determine if the application is first complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. We'll move into a public hearing and begin the time at which the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree also with the recommended staff stipulations and the staff reports. The board will have an opportunity then to ask some relevant follow-up questions of the applicants or staff. I'll then ask for testimony from the audience. I'll first ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan. If you so choose, you can come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and go ahead. This will be your time to express any concerns or ask any questions that you may have regarding the plan of the applicant. Next, I'll ask for a testimony from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board may then also ask some relevant follow-up questions. At that point, the applicant will given a chance to come back up, sort of a rebuttal period in which they can respond to any of the questions or concerns raised by the public's testimony. If so needed, I will give the opportunity for sort of one member of the public to respond to any of those items brought forth during the rebuttal period. After that's been completed, the public hearing will end, and the board will resume into a public meeting, at which time we'll deliberate and vote on the application in front of us. I'm going to ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand and not repeat what has already been said. And we want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in our Nashua revised ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. Thank everybody for their interest and courteous attention. Ask that if you do have a cell phone, that if you could put it on silent at this time as well. All right, so moving on to old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, there are none. Old business site plan, case number one, Diane E. Gimber, Bishop Real Estate Management, Inc. That particular site plan has been tabled to an uncertain date at this time. New business conditional special use permits, there are none. New business subdivision plans, there are none. New business site plans, case number two, 441 Amherst Street LLC owner, application and acceptance of proposed site plan amendment to NR 0862 to renovate an existing facade of the building. This property is located at 441 Amherst Street, Sheet Eight, Lot 291, Zone GB, General Business, and R9 Suburban Residence in Ward Two. Does anybody have a chance on the board to take a look at this application and willing to make a motion regarding whether it's ready for us to review it and take jurisdiction?
Some would.
We have a motion by Mr. Weber.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barley. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? No extensions? Okay, so that motion passes, and is there an applicant here for this particular... Come on up, just state your name and address, and then, you know, can review your application with us.
All right. Brett Scott, I'm here, and you guys are 441 Amherst Street in Nashua.
Okay.
Looking to renovate the front of the building to use an EPIS material. My understanding is that I need a special exception for that. Other than that, a couple other minor changes, adding some walls around the side at the top, and then also cutting back the front a little bit. The overhang will be about two feet less when it's completed.
Okay. All right, and you have one waiver request on here?
Yes.
So, and that's for Section 190-172D?
Yep.
You're requesting to waive the Nashua building standards? Can you just explain the intent of why you want to waive that?
Ultimately, the material that we're looking to use, the EPIS material, is not, you know, traditionally, you know, allowed, so it's my understanding I need a special exception for that. Basically, it's very similar to what is allowed in Nashua as far as using a concrete block. It's a more efficient, you know, newer way of doing that process where it looks very similar to that. And so that's our intent of why we're looking to use that material over a traditional block.
Okay. Are there any standards for, I guess FedEx, right?
Yeah, FedEx Office leases part of the building.
Okay. Any standards that you're trying to follow from them or regard to signage or anything like that?
I know. They're going to use their existing signage. We're going to put that back in the building in the same exact place. There'll be no changes to that. But no, there's not really. I mean, FedEx just requires, you know, that it be, you know, basically a clean look and, you know, a normal, basic color.
Okay.
Yep. I've spoke with them, and they're in favor of this project.
Okay. All right, I'll open up... Anybody from the board have any questions of the applicant?
I guess I have one question.
Sure, Mr. Repucci.
The... This is the building that had the Gott, Inc.
Yep.
Business in it. You guys, will there be some kind of requirement that the signage on that building be legitimate signage and not like a handmade, painted?
Yeah, of course, and that would be up to the applicant that, you know, hopefully leases that space, but of course, you know, we're going to follow the rules.
Because that sign was awful.
What's that?
That building looked awful with that.
Well, like, I've only owned it for about six months, and during that process, you know, I've met with the building inspector and now presenting this project, so my hope is to clean up the property all around, not just the front. We're looking to paint the sides, clean up, you know, clean up around the building as well and make it more appealing for a business to go in there.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Ed?
Yes. I visited the site and appreciate that you're going to clean up around the site. Are you going to be doing the dumpsters, enclosures?
That's something I can do.
I'd appreciate it. It's also code.
Okay.
It's just, I'm not going to stipulate it.
Yep.
Because you're just doing the front. It's all you're doing is really minimal stuff, but I just wanted to make, you know, keep you in understanding that.
Yeah, yeah, that's easy enough.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
What's the purpose for reducing that overhang by two feet?
Mostly to create a flat front, which will give the appearance that the building is taller than it is, and whereas right now it's slanted. And also because the existing structure that's there, the part that actually slants, is made out of wood, whereas we can go right on to the open web trusses, and it'll be easier for construction purposes as well, and I believe it'll give the appearance that the building's higher even though it won't be higher.
Right, good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The site plan on file is dated 1981. Don't believe there are a lot of significant changes since, but I thought in this process it should have been updated. I was looking at the site plan. It has like 12 cars, parking spaces on the street side, and by the count of what you have out, it's less than 10, less than 12. And as far as handicap spaces and so on, I would expect that this amendment would have reflected, you know, the need for handicap spaces and so on, so I wish, I wish that was the case.
I think there are a couple handicap spaces at the front of that building by the FedEx section.
Yeah, I'm just saying, the plan.
Okay.
On file is, it's old and it should have been updated to reflect what today's, you know, today's requirements. So be it. The, Linda, if you want to put this in the staff report, I think you highlighted the wrong site as a site?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's the next, the next door one.
Yeah. All right.
That's the only thing.
Okay.
Thank you, and if I may, just I have a couple questions for you, just from my own general knowledge, as I'm new to the board. The renovations you want to do, is it just simply cosmetic or is it, is it a necessary?
I would say it's simply cosmetic.
Okay, and the material you're going to use, you said earlier that this is a little easier to use.
Right.
It's easier than the concrete block.
Yep.
Is this accepted in the industry? Is this what the industry is using now?
Absolutely. If you go down through Daniel Webster Highway without naming any companies, there's a lot of buildings down there that have been recently remodeled, including like the building that Fidelity is in. That would be a good example, and that really is, you know, one of the buildings that I looked to, you know, when I was planning to do this.
But you had to come, you had to come in front of this board just because of the regulations, not because this is...
I guess I wouldn't be here if I didn't have to be.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks.
All right.
Appreciate it. At this time, I'd ask, is anybody in the audience is wishing to speak in concern for the plan? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? None? Okay. Any more from the board before I close the hearing and move into the meeting for the applicant or staff? All right, this time I'll close the hearing, move into the public meeting, so pretty straightforward. You know, basically a facade upgrade. We've seen this a bunch of times because, you know, our standards are kind of certain materials. Generally speaking, we see this usually when there's kind of a manufac... some sort of branding kind of issue that we're dealing with, like a car dealer or something is trying to match up with a national image or branding. So we have sort of approved this kind of material and this sort of look, I think, quite a few times. That's not uncommon, and our, our current regulations are, you know, somewhat limited when it comes to the commercial district things, I think, so. Anybody else have any thoughts or questions? You mentioned something on the plan. Steve, do you think that needs to be addressed as a stipulation to update it, to reflect any of the parking or anything?
I don't want to make it an issue, but you know, I think it's called a site amendment.
Right.
And I know it's just a facade. In fact, I would ask, could that be handled administratively?
Right.
Nevertheless, I think regulations pointed them to this board.
Yeah.
But if the plan's going to be on record, it should be a plan that represents what's out there, because apparently the site was built with this plan originally back in the eighties.
Yeah.
And changes took place, and the plan didn't get updated, and so I'm going forward. So they continue to make changes, and still we don't have what's on record. How do we know they're following, you know, regulations?
Right.
That's, that's the point I was making.
Sure, I get it. Yeah, do you think it's worth, I mean, we, we've seen putting stipulations on here before that there needs to be minor drafting provisions done to correctly reflect the parking, actual parking arrangement or something like that? I mean, that's...
The difference here is they don't, they don't have, I mean, this, this plan's, you know, 30 something years old.
Yeah, it would require like going back.
It's not like they've already got an engineer who's done a plan, and they could say, oh, we just need to make these changes, right?
Right, yeah, we'd be sending them back out for it, but I don't know. I'm willing to entertain what people think on it. Any thoughts? Anybody feel strongly about that or not really?
No. What do you want to hear from staff?
True, true, yeah, okay.
That's already there, so I'm inclined to know.
Dumpster, Ed, do you need to have that one?
No.
Okay. Anybody's staff?
Well, I did want to just say that we are going to make some changes to the plan. We're going to have some notes added to the plan about the facade change, so it'll be on the existing site plan. They're going to add a dumpster enclosure, which is also not on the site plan right now, so we are going to make those minor changes to it. Since it was just a facade change and they had to ask for a waiver for the EPIS, to make them go through the expense of having a whole new site plan done at this point, we thought that would be pretty expensive for the owner of the building, plus they are going to be getting hopefully another tenant in on the other side, and depending on who that tenant is, it might require another trip back to the planning board. Some changes are minor and they can be handled administratively. If they weren't using EPIS, if they were using another material that was allowed, we would have just handled this administratively.
Right.
Which is, you know, why they had to come to the board. We're going to have another case in May, same thing. They want to use EPIS, and they're going to also come
Yeah.
To the board. But yeah, we did look at the site plan, and it is pretty old, but they're just doing some minor changes, and we are going to note them on the site plan that we keep in our office so that it will be on file.
All right, so you can make those changes internally yourself, at least to mark them off or whatever.
And they're pretty minor in nature. There's nothing, you know, really big that they're, you know, some, just some minor changes over the years. It kind of happened, and like the dumpster, we're also going to add to the plan.
Okay. Does that work for you, Steve?
Yeah, again, I mean, again, I think if that's passed through staff and it came in this, this state, I guess there's not much we can do.
We also did have, you know, engineering and fire took a look at it too, and they didn't have any issues with it, you know, circulation wise or anything like that, so we thought that this would be a pretty minor change and it could be handled this way.
Okay.
But I will also wonder, is not requiring, not necessarily this one, but say, say another application should come in and it's quite different from what exists out there, do the regulations require us that, that require them that they submit something that's accurate?
Yeah, we would. We would have, if we would take a look at the site and if there have been significant changes over the years, especially if there's any kind of life safety issues or things that really need to be addressed and looked at, in that case, we would probably have them do a new site plan and come back in with it.
Well, for instance, one of the things I observed up in out there is that I think the driveway is a shared driveway.
Right.
I think it straddles both properties.
Right.
The site plan doesn't show that. Now, I don't know if there's any kind of liability when it comes to having a plan that doesn't show that.
Okay. Anybody want, any other discussion or want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Barley?
Make a motion to approve new business number two, site plan, finding that does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO Section 190-146D with one stipulation, that being a waiver request, suggesting waiver of Section 190-172D specifying building design standards specifically with respect to the use of EPIS, and that stipulation would read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Okay, thanks. We have a motion to approve this new business number two. Do we have a second? Mr. Repucci? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any extensions? None. Okay, motion passes. Thanks. All right, so we're going to move on. So the next thing on the agenda is item, case number three, that's John J. Flatley Company, application and acceptance of proposed site plan to construct a 200, 255, 272 square foot research and development facility. That, that's being postponed to a June meeting at this time. On other business, case number one, we have the review of the tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. Anybody had a chance to take a look at this tentative agenda we have in front of us and make a motion? Mr. Kelly?
I have reviewed it, and there's nothing of regional impact.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Kelly. There are no proposals of regional impact. A second? Second by Mr. Repucci. Any discussion?
The only, some of these have already been approved, right, previous meetings? So this isn't really as long.
This came out over a week ago. Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe on the backside.
On the backside, yeah? Okay, all right. But I don't think that affects the regional impacts also. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any extensions? None. Okay, that passes. Okay, moving on to discussion item, case number one, Riviera University. So we have in front of us, I think in our packets, a project preview for Riviera University. Do we have somebody who wants to kind of step up and tell us a little bit about it? Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Sister Paula Marie Buely. I'm president of Riviera University, 420 South Main Street. Mr. Chair, gentlemen of the committee, good evening. Riviera is returning with Vision 2020. We appreciate your advice and consent during the last six years for the gateway projects, which are represented by our Main Street and Clement Street improvements. Vision 2020 takes us, according to our motto, higher and better, and in this context, we present to you schematic drawings representing a new science center, which replaces our 1959 Mendel Hall, and phase two improvements to our athletic facilities. Currently, on the highest point in Nashua, we have regulation collegiate field turf. We have no supporting amenities around that, and so really very consistent with our philosophy that Nashua is our home and the world is our classroom, consistent with the state initiatives in STEM education, in workforce development, and as a public benefit to the broader community in which we support athletic programs clearly during the summer. We're really delighted to present the plans at a very initial phase. With me is our Vice President for Finance and Administration, Dr. John Parker, and also an individual who is not a stranger to you, Mr. Tim Manis of Durkin et Cen, who is our architect of record. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks.
My name is Tim Manis with Durkin et Cen LLC now. Its name has changed slightly, and I have been before this board before, and thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board, for hearing us tonight. What we have in mind, as Sister Paula was mentioning, is giving you a preview of upcoming projects. We've been working with Riviera for several months now, well, actually for about five and a half years, but on the current set of projects for several months to look forward on to what's the next thing that's really happening on campus. And with your permission, what I'd like to do is two things. First of all, and this all has to do with what you're going to see on the screens around you, so I'll give you a fair warning there. The first thing I would like to do is give you an overall sense of what is being proposed with a video animation, and then after that happens, I have a PowerPoint slideshow to kind of give you the detail that we know so far. So what you see on this image is a kind of a aerial view over South Main Street. This video will take you to the Science Center and inside the Science Center, to the degree it's been developed so far. It will then give you a kind of a brief view of Muldoon, the gymnasium building, which is anticipated to have an additional kind of large box on it, if you will, kind of a multipurpose space, and then up to the top of the hill for the athletics venues, and then back down to the Science Center. So it'll just take just a couple of minutes, and after that, we will get into a little bit more detail for the project. So here we go. Riviera University 2020. So now the new Science Center is coming right into your view, where Mendel currently sits. You see the sand volleyball court on the right, which is currently there. Behind the building, where we're anticipating an outdoor classroom type rain garden for stormwater management to assist with that. Now we're going to go inside for a moment. This building is really envisioned as a campus building, along with being a science building. It's going to be a building that invites people in and that really is a beacon. A two-story space for student gathering. And of course, since it is a science building, laboratories... And of course, since it is a science building, laboratories, um, really a, a sea change in comparison to what's in Mendel Hall currently. So notice that with buildings of this type now, there's much more emphasis put on science on display, being able to see what's going on in them, uh, and being a, kind of a part of the action from at least a visual standpoint. And our second story gathering space overlooking Clement Street, looking toward the library. And the four, and the distance now coming up is the uh, concept for in addition to Muldoon, toward the intersection of South Main and Fairway. A multipurpose space that Riviere could use for various functions that they do now on their gym floor. Now we're up on the hill. This is the uh, the field turf field with what we're calling the Raider Pavilion. It's lockers, it's showers, it's uh, taping room, that kind of thing, 'cause there's nothing there now. And then the softball venue. It's a nice softball field now, but there's no place to sit. It's not accessible. So we're putting the infrastructure there in. And that's that. And now I will go to a little more detail. Pardon me. So, in your preview pack, you were given a very uh, brief glimpse of what we have in this uh, a little bit longer PowerPoint that I would like to go over with you. And uh, of course, the projects that have been completed at Riviere since uh, twenty thirteen, late twenty twelve really. The chapel renovation, the gateways, which is a large number of, of things that happened. Uh, the Dion Quad, uh, the Dion Interiors Project, which if you haven't been to the Dion Hall lately, please go in to see the interior there. It's been updated significantly. And the Clement Street Project, which is actually in its finalized stages right now. They're just doing the punch list today. There are several things uh, left to do there. Uh, and of course, we ran out of weather last year. Uh, and the anticipated projects that we're looking at now are the athletics upgrades, which you saw in that video, the Science Center and the Muldoon Expansion, uh, probably in that order. As far as like starting at the top of the hill and building down, uh, kind of idea. And so this presentation is really to gain your reaction and input uh, early on before we move into the next phase of design work. We have completed a conceptual phase and kind of a schematic pricing package. Now we really need to get into the uh, the technical detail to a much greater degree, so that when we come back to you, to your uh, staff, we'll be ready to make a full-fledged planning board uh, submission. Uh, and then of course, the anticipated uh, schedule, we would like, uh, and we're trying to work toward getting a possible first project in this year and at least start that construction this year. And that would be the athletics portion up on the hill there. Um, and we're working with the state, with Ridge Mock at the, at DES on a uh, alteration of terrain permit to see how that's all gonna fit together. And we've been working with your staff on some of those questions. Uh, and of course, site plan approval. We understand we have to come back to this body for approval uh, moving forward. So, you know, again, the past several years, uh, that white line kind of represents all of the areas of campus that have been touched, if you will. And so now the focus is really toward probably those two right-hand side arrows up the hill, the Science Center, Muldoon, uh, and, let me see, is this the right way? That's the right way. So, uh, and just some, some background on the campus for those who might not be as familiar with it or haven't been to these uh, been here when we've been here. Uh, of course, the entire campus is located within the city. Riviere owns approximately forty-three acres of ground. Uh, the zoning is residential. There are thirty parcels on campus. Uh, five major areas, and what I mean by that, if you kind of group where the parcels are, they surround South Main and Clement Street. Uh, and twenty-one buildings that are more or less the buildings you can get into uh, from the, from the public side of things. The uh, the building usage, you'll notice that along Clement Street really is where most of the academic uses are. So it's fitting that the Science Building go back into the same location that it is now. Uh, even astrated buildings are over in this direction, uh, office and uh, the residential buildings you see here, kind of in the purple color. It's a small campus, so campus zoning isn't that critical, but we know that the academic buildings are mostly along uh, Clement Street. And uh, you know, the Mendel and Saint Joe's Buildings are really where the focus of the science planning is. The idea is that both of those buildings will actually go offline and be demolished when the Science Building goes in. Just for a sense of scale, the existing Science Building is nine thousand square feet in size. The proposed one is thirty thousand square feet in size. So there's a significant uh, upgrade in terms of size there. And let me just stop there for one second. One thing I do wanna say is, um, you know, the Mendel was built in nineteen fifty-nine. Nothing wrong with nineteen fifty-nine, but uh, it's an antiquated building. It looks like my junior high school, actually. Uh, and that's not saying anything. Uh, but it, it's been there a long time. Science facilities on colleges are really advanced now. They're, a lot of people are building new science facilities because the sciences are where a lot of people are emphasizing. Uh, a lot of students are going toward. So this building is really meant to bring Riviere up to date and really look into the future then, uh, replacing what's there already. And then, uh, the ultimate picture, we're, we're not doing anything to Sylvia Trotter Hall right now, but the idea is that some of the functions of Sylvia Trotter in terms of science labs are going to move into the new Science Center. And then that will free up space in Sylvia Trotter for nursing to expand and space they need, and also for the business program. So there's some kind of internal shuffling going on there without really building anything at Sylvia Trotter that will be allowed when the Science Center's done, if you see what I'm saying. It's kind of a shuffle of spaces going on here. So, I just, before I forget to mention that, I wanna mention it as I'm looking at this. Um, again, it's a residential neighborhood, Nashville Country Club. Residential areas, old and new on either side here. We have uh, our roads and entrances. I mean, the, the campus kind of overlays the city street grid and we have some major uh, vehicular gateways, if you will, that we've addressed to, to a great degree. And of course, kind of our campus center, if you will, geographically or at least architecturally, is going to be this intersection right here uh, as people visit campus. Uh, you'll recall that whenever we come in for a project, we usually have to ask for relief from the, from the fact that we are in a residential zone here. So I think it's a special exception, is that, or conditional use, I'm sorry, conditional use for anything we do here. And that's fine, so we wanna just keep that in mind, something we need to do moving forward. A couple of things that we know that we will be addressing or talking about, and we talked to your staff about it a little bit so far. Uh, the height regulation in that zone is thirty-five feet, the maximum height. A science building typically is going to have a fifteen-foot floor-to-floor distance, something not dissimilar from what you see in here. 'Cause there's a lot of infrastructure that has to fit under the steel in those buildings. Uh, so, just a two-story building itself, I'm sure will be at least thirty feet tall, maybe thirty-two or thirty-four feet tall. Then we've got an equipment area on top of that, uh, that may look like a roof. It may look like a equipment surrounded by uh, screening or something. And uh, we had talked a little bit uh, already about this and how to handle that. So we don't know yet exactly, but there may be a variance issue there that uh, has to be addressed as we get into this more. The other thing I will mention, that doesn't, it doesn't show up in this presentation, but I wanna uh, make sure I mention it. If you just look at the, let me go back one here. If you look, okay, here's a good example right here. Uh, let me point out that right where my cursor is, is an internal property line to Riviere. Riviere has a number of these internal property lines, uh, as a typical on a college campus. But the athletics building we are proposing up here, the uh, the Pavilion Building, actually is uh, cut off by that property line. I, I don't think that's gonna be an issue because Riviere owns both sides of the property line. Uh, but just full disclosure from the, from the beginning here, that's, that's something that will be uh, maybe noted in the plan review process. So, Athletics Pavilion is thought of as the first project, uh, softball improvements, connector driveway, and you'll see that in just a moment, over to the Sylvia Trotter Lot, accessible parking and seating. Science will be the number two project, uh, which is the new, new facility. Mendel and Saint Joe's will be raised, programs moved from Trotter, and then the Muldoon Expansion, number three, um, as we kinda go through this uh, process. And so, really this takes that kind of eastern end of campus and kinda remodels it almost in its entirety, uh, from one end to the other. Let me start then with athletics into greater detail here, if you will. Uh, this is an aerial view of the existing athletics. You see uh, that uh, the turf fields here on top, Raider Field, as it's currently called. It's a nice sized field, uh, a variety of functions happen there for uh, for Riviere. Then there's Raider Diamond. Again, a great venue in terms of where it's located, but there's, there's no place to sit. There's no way to get there if you have an accessibility need. Uh, there are some athletics offices, actually a meeting room and a locker room in Saint Joseph's. Uh, there is Riv Beach, and then there's the Muldoon Center. And that really is the athletic complex uh, at Riviere. So, our task was to address the needs of support spaces, the athletic experience, the fan experience also. If Grandma and Grandpa wanna come see somebody play, how do they get there? Uh, accessibility, which we've been trying to do in all of our projects, and I'll say in two ways. One is the handicap accessibility, but also getting people off of driveways and onto sidewalks. If you were at Riviere seven or eight years ago, you might have seen a lot of people walking in driveways because there were not a lot of sidewalks there. We've been trying to build more sidewalks, separate the pedestrian traffic from the vehicular traffic, and this project, all these projects uh, attempt to do the same thing. Uh, so it's seating, it's uh, adding the fan venues, um, and really developing that up on the hill there. And I'll just kinda skip through this, so you can see this slide instead. Um, yeah, this goes right to here. So here's a site plan, an aerial view that shows you what we're attempting to do here. Uh, Raider Diamond is here now. Really the focus of this project is around the edges of it, with the dugouts, with the bleachers, with the press box. Raider Field is here now, and the focus of this project is the bleachers and it's the uh, press box and the building below it, which is lockers, restrooms, uh, storage rooms, taping, uh, officials' room, all the things you really kinda need to run an athletics event, be it a tournament, be it a camp, uh, or day-to-day. The one thing I mentioned, but has not shown up really graphically until now. As you go up into Riviere today, if you drive up there, you'll go up into this parking lot and this driveway takes you to this uh, large cul-de-sac. Uh, and we're almost keeping that in the exact same place, but it's kind of a dead end now. So we're proposing to actually, excuse me, build a connector driveway from about this location around to the Sylvia Trotter Hall parking lot. To kinda bring some more of the traffic internal to Riviere University, to allow that flow through there, to remove that kinda dead end you have from both directions. And to also, uh, if people are coming here for athletics parking, we have, we're proposing seventeen parking spaces up here where there actually are none now. So, uh, we would anticipate that uh, that would be specially assigned parking, maybe for officials or coaches or whatever. But there would still be a way if people are coming in here to say, you know, you need to go over here and park uh, for an event, whatever that might be. So we're trying to anticipate some flexibility in circulation. Uh, that dashed blue line really represents the athletics project uh, boundary, as we're thinking of it right now. Athletics Pavilion, you see it pictured here. It's a one-story building, uh, aesthetically very similar to Muldoon Center, so we can keep that athletics theme. Uh, the only upper portion of it really is the press box here, uh, with some vaulted roofs over that. It's a, a room, as I said, or a building, as I said, that really consists of locker rooms and restrooms, both uh, for the teams themselves, public restrooms that have been sized to support both the uh, softball venue and this venue, some storage areas, and then the needed service, uh, electrical closets, those types of things. And then seating up here, uh, depending on how you count your seating, either an eighteen-inch wide seat or a hundred, or a twenty-four-inch wide seat, if I could read that, I'll tell you what it says. Between a hundred and ninety-six and two hundred and forty-one seats. And you know, whoever comes to the games now, I'm not really sure where they sit unless it's a portable bleacher. So what we're really trying to do is address a need that's there, uh, already, without overdoing it with the seating. And then a four hundred and eighty-foot, or square foot press box, uh, with dual filming platforms up here. You could get up here with a camera. Uh, it's important to, to programs to be able to film what's going on. Uh, and that will be the second floor piece of it. Backside view, the bleachers back here, a center entrance, access for both athletes and for um, the, the fans. And then we go up to Raider Diamond. And by the way, all the field lighting is already here. If you've seen those fields, you know that Musco lighting is already in place for lighting of the fields. Uh, so, again, we're talking about adding bullpens, uh, adding dugouts, adding the uh, bleachers behind and getting rid of the chain link fence and putting up ballstopper netting uh, instead. Really just elevating the finishes of, oops, sorry about that, uh, of the uh, of the field itself. And this gives you a sense, this is a little bit more technical drawing of what we're talking about. The field really remains, the irrigation remains. We're working on, around the edges to provide the uh, the infrastructure that's needed for the teams and for the fans. And you see that again here in this picture. And the backside also. Uh, there would be storage below this, uh, press box, the upper level press box then. And then if I could just take you to the Science Center, I know this is going fast, and it's a lot of stuff. Uh, an aerial view of what's there now, Mendel, Saint Joe's on the left, some parking. Uh, there's this driveway that connects this parking up through the middle. There's a driveway here on the north side of uh, Mendel. There's a driveway over on the north side of Muldoon now. And there we go. And so, from about the same angle, you see the, the shift in the building size. You see that, uh, we're really trying to get the pedestrians coming down Clement Street. And there's a very vet, natural connection there between this building and Sylvia Trotter in terms of the nursing program and the sciences and how they relate. So we definitely wanna pay attention uh, to the eastern side of Clement Street and finishing that sidewalk up and down through there, uh, so that there is an easy passage on that side of the street for that uh, function. Uh, the building itself is all about discovery and innovation, science on display, active learning and student faculty research, integration of biology, biotechnology, chemistry and physics. It's a welcome envi- welcoming environment for all students. You might have noticed the fireplace in that great room. Uh, and uh, so we're thinking this is gonna be a draw for all students to really come there and meet those interactions that are very valuable on a college campus. And it's a representation of the university's momentum and energy. Uh, this uh, prime location on campus, as you see here, a signature bu- building and really a signature location, highly visible and really at the center uh, of Riviere's campus. As far as the building zoning diagram goes, if you think about this building in three pieces, uh, the left hand or the public zone, we're just calling it that. Not that you can't get through the whole building, you can. The public zone would be entry classrooms, the world of science being streamed into Riviere, collaboration area offices, stair and elevator. Uh, the uh, more, more kind of focused lab zone here, uh, with labs, lab prep areas, collaboration spaces, science on display. Uh, you know, the scientists want to be, have, have science on display, but not scientists on display. So we have to kind of make sure they have their, their room to work. And of course, we have our services and uh, so forth on the, the right-hand side of the building here. And that's why we get this kind of layout that you'll see in just a second. I, I wanna stop for one moment and talk about the circulation here now. You see the orange arrows represent uh, the way vehicles can kind of go in and around this site. There's a vehicular passage here. There is a road that leads you up the hill to athletics. There's the passage in and out of the Muldoon parking lot, and then of course, this parking lot here. Uh, one of the goals of this project is to uh, decrease the number of barriers that pedestrians have to traverse from Muldoon back to the western side of campus. And instead of allowing uh, this driveway specifically and this parking lot to cut that up, or to cut it, 'cause you really can't walk on a sidewalk from one place to another there now. We wanna create a continuous uh, pedestrian zone. So that's gonna require some moving of driveways. And there we go. One more. So we put our building down and that's about the location it's going. We put our pedestrian in the yellow. Uh, you see, we wanna kinda create this arc from what's an existing sidewalk here, right around. Uh, and then of course, down Clement Street, even communicating with South Main. And then we're anticipating a new walkway going up to athletics here. Uh, the site plan then starts looking like this. Uh, with our new walkway, our Science Building, of course, the Muldoon uh, expansion in the future. of course, the Muldoon expansion in the future, new sidewalk up Clement Street, all the way down to South Main. And then, another important movement pedestrian-wise, there's, as you know, a large parking area down here toward Memorial, a number of commuter students here at Riviera, so we want to make sure that we're addressing that circulation function here also. So, in this, you see that this driveway moves north, St. Joe's really becomes replaced by parking here and here, and we have a driveway that kind of goes behind, and then, of course, connects up through and goes over to the Sylvia Trotter parking lot up to athletics. Some views of the building, you've seen these in a very kind of quick format with the movie, the view kind of hovering over the intersection, a little bit closer to the two-story space, the campus end of the building, if you will, what you will see really from the street itself. It's, the materiality of the building is to be in keeping with what's at Riviera now, maybe take it up a little bit, the brick, obviously, the precast banding, the precast that looks like large stone, kind of a large stone treatment on the building, and the glass. We really felt it was important to keep that corner of the building into an active space, glassy, light, so that in the evening, it would have a better chance of being lit up, students in there studying, talking, whatever, so it has this nice kind of a beacon quality to it on the corner there. And then, the backside, I mentioned that we really want to focus on handling, for nothing else, stormwater quality by doing a large rain garden here on the backside of the building, and the faculty is actually interested in using that to talk about, to their students' water quality, and how construction and building affects water quality, so that would be our goal behind the building, to do this space here, and it's also an enjoyable space to be in. The initial floor plans of the building, you see the first floor here, two classrooms, kind of on the campus end, the collaboration two-story space for the students and whoever wants to hang out there, really, large open space here, and then, we get into the lab zone in the middle with the lab prep spaces, the mechanical spaces on the ends, and it's a very similar layout on the second floor, but whereas we have classrooms below, now we have office suite up here, kind of a collaboration, student-faculty collaboration area here, group meeting rooms, open meeting rooms. College campuses very much are stressing in all their projects anymore, collaboration, collaboration between students, but also between disciplines, and putting these small collaboration stations in, if you will, both open and places you can put a door on, people get a screen, they get a computer, they set around a table, they do their projects, and that's a huge part of building anymore on a campus. So, that's what we have in mind here. And then, the final piece of this is the Muldoon expansion, really a, we keep calling it a gymnasium box, but what it is, is a box that will support a gymnasium floor, but really give Riviera something that you don't have now, which is the ability to do intermurals without interfering with the basketball and volleyball program, to do their open house in this space, instead of having to roll a floor protector out on the gym floor, and just, you know, a dance room, all kinds of things that they're trying to juggle now, with the facility they have, expand it out, use this for that. So, there would be that gym space, there would be a service, or not a service, but a storage room, probably on this end, and probably, I think I have a plan on here, yeah, here's the plan for that end down here, probably a locker room space also on this end, because this building is actually very short on locker room space right now. One piece that this will eventually be asking this group about, and your staff, currently, let me just go back one, you see this driveway here is an in, no, it's an out-only driveway. We're looking at the possibility of asking for a two-way driveway in here, and with the understanding that we want to keep the bothersome nature of that to a minimum, or negate it if we can, from this neighbor, moving this toward South Main, and doing some screening in there, so that's why you see that moving from here over to here now. We want to try to think about redoing that, so that's something we'll be working with you on moving forward. And then, of course, you see the pedestrian zones as we go through here. This is the plan of Muldoon I was mentioning. The part down here is all new. Currently, Muldoon is, I thought I had it before, but I guess I don't, currently Muldoon is only to this line here, if I can trace that line out, this would all be the new portion down here, new lockers, new box, if you will, new service area, or storage room, rather. So, the discussion that we've been having with your staff so far, in some, in some just very preliminary meetings, I've talked a little bit about the building height, the circulation, you know, we really want to bring some of that circulation internal, get that extra road or driveway off of here, and make this connector over to Sylvia Trotter. The athletics, you know, up on the top, we need to connect a sewer line to the athletics facility, we know that, we have plenty of water up there, there's a huge water service, actually, because they used to irrigate the soccer field, but they don't do that anymore because it's field turf, so they only irrigate the softball. So, we need to bring a sewer line down, and we've talked about that, the Fairway Street entrance was just mentioned, the parking is increasing from thirty-one to forty-five, at least in the plan we have right now. You know, it doesn't pay Riviera to hurt itself in terms of parking, and they understand that, we want to be aware of that on this project. Stormwater, we're working right now with the state on probably an AOT permit, so we're going to be going through the whole process of handling the stormwater, and obviously, we have to go through site plan approval and the sequencing of the construction. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we think that it makes sense to start at the top, try to get this project underway, kind of build out of there then downhill, because when the science project's going, a lot of that area is going to be shut down for construction, and then, whenever Muldoon comes online, we're kind of backing out of the campus on that end. And, that's it. So, I'll answer whatever questions you might have now, to the degree I can, because we're kind of early in the process, but feel free.
All right, thanks. A couple just questions I have, is there any parts of this area that are still left on, any combined storm and sewer setup around here, do you know?
I know that you did a project on Clement Street years ago, and then down South Main to a great degree, I think that, I mean, you know, Steve knows better than I do.
But like up the hill and stuff, Steve, is any of that combined still up there?
Well, there's a separate storm drain on South Main that outlets on land owned by the Country Club for treatment. The sewer runs down there, I think it still carries some combined, the San Antonio still carries some combined flow, but it's largely separated.
Yeah, so that might be something to look at as part of, you know, significant work, whether that's, is there any opportunity to fix that?
I know there's a gap on where this, there's actually no, I think, no sewer line, like in this piece of South Main, the sewer line kind of starts here and goes that way, and starts here and goes this way, or something like that, it's on your GIS system, so you got to kind of hit the right zone there.
So, that just might be something to look at, in the big picture, we might be interested in. How about, is geotech work been done yet up in this area, is there ledges, is there any blasting thoughts, or?
We really don't want to blast anything, because that usually means a lot of money. You know, nobody wants to blast. Right now, we have, we are asking Millers, Miller, yes, I think that's right.
Miller Engineering.
Yes, to do some infiltration testing for us, and we're going to follow up on that soon with a geotechnical request for the building itself. The science building is envisioned right now with no basement under it, so we're not digging down, we, obviously, we dig footings down, but we don't want to do any really deep excavations there. There would be an excavation for an elevator pit, but to back to your question, yeah, we want to avoid any type of, you know, heavy-duty rock removal if at all possible.
Yeah, I just bring it up, it's certainly something, a butter's even pretty far away, often comes to this meeting to talk about, so.
Correct, yeah.
We did, yeah, we did encounter a lot of ledge on South Main Street when we were doing this sewer separation job, we had blasting.
Okay.
Yes.
So, something to think about in that area. You said all the lighting was existing, right, so on the fields, the lighting on the fields is existing right now for the most part?
Yes, the field lighting is all existing.
Right, okay.
There'll be pedestrian lighting going up there, there'll be some parking lot lighting, well, actually, there's lighting, there's, you know, municipal lighting, Cobra heads going up there now on the light poles. We'll be bringing that more into the campus standard that you can see out there now.
Yeah, okay. Any energy goals for the buildings, like lead or green globes or anything like that?
No lead goals, but really, so much of that stuff is becoming just code anymore, so you just do it, LED lighting, and, you know, the energy code, you've got to meet that for thermal, so, and we'll obviously meet all those requirements.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Mr. Varley?
Let me say a couple of quick questions about the first phase of the project, the athletic fields. I know now, going from Muldoon up to the field, that's a pretty steep hill.
Yeah.
So, you mentioned there would be parking at the top, is that, would you have accessible parking there?
Yes, yes, once we can get people to the top of that hill, then we can get them to the soccer field, and we could even get them to softball with the right ramping, but getting up that hill is the challenge, so that's why we have to do our accessible parking up there.
Okay, and then, and by looking at this right there, is there would then be also a sidewalk going up the hill?
Yes, we are planning on a sidewalk, just again, get people a way of getting there without walking in the road.
And you said you anticipate starting that project this year, do you have a sense of when that timing would be, would be?
If I had my druthers, I would like to be back in here in a couple of months, meeting with you on a site plan approval, but we'll see. Yeah, we're, it's a little complicated, because the project kind of is set up so that we would want to do an AOT permit for all of this work, and yet, we're really only know enough of the details of the athletics to kind of fill out all the lines properly. But in our back and forth with the state up until even yesterday, there is some latitude in there, in knowing kind of a certain amount, and then, coming back in and filling out the details later, so we're trying to get it done early, and then, come in with that first piece, so.
I'll just say, so my in-laws live over an orchard to have, so I go through here quite a bit, and the improvements you've done so far, I think, look fantastic, I think they've really improved the appearance of the campus, and like what I've seen here tonight, so look forward to seeing that first project.
Great.
Mr. Weber?
Do you foresee a traffic report, the need for a traffic report?
We've talked to your staff a little bit about that, and I don't think we really made a conclusion yet. We thought about, you know, I mean, it's obviously going to change some things, in terms of at least where driveways are, but the traffic is still going to be the traffic that's there now, so I'm kind of open to guidance on that.
Is there a bus line, Nashua bus line that goes through here?
There's a bus stop, there's a bus stop, I think, on this side here, and over here, right where that walkway is, is that right? Yeah, those two places.
Okay. I would also ask Sister, if you wouldn't mind waiting around, I have a question for you that doesn't pertain to this.
Certainly, my pleasure.
Thank you, thank you.
When was the last traffic report for this site as a whole, do you know?
I have no idea, I don't know if one was ever done. Really, our work so far, at least with our firm, has been site improvements to date, and this is the first time we're really coming in with a building, I don't know what the, I don't know if one's ever been done for this site.
Yeah. Mr. Peterson?
In addition to the bus stop question, will there be room for bicycle paths around the campus?
Well, I know there's a bicycle path going down South Main now, I don't know about, I don't think there's one going up Clement Street. I don't know what the campus's policy is on riding on campus, I mean, there's not really a lot of places to ride on campus, and it's kind of hilly on that one side anyway. There's nothing really stopping you from riding your bike in a driveway and up the hill if you're willing to pedal that hill, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Weber?
I go there probably by Riviera, probably in the summertime, ten times a week, I go to the Nashua Country Club and stuff there. There's never been a traffic problem, ever.
Great.
I'm just, I didn't know how it was going to change, so.
Yeah, well, you know, Clement Street, obviously, or not Clement Street, but South Main is through traffic, really Clement Street is, a lot of that traffic is Riviera's traffic. And, you know, one of the goals in putting that driveway in up into Sylvia Trotter is to try to just, you know, let that flow internally a little bit, if possible, instead of having those two kind of dead ends going around and around. Encouraging people to walk on sidewalks, although I did hear somebody today in the Student Center ask for a ride to Bressard Hall, which is about a hundred and fifty yards away, so.
Anybody else, Mr. Duker?
Thank you. Seems that you're making efforts to deal with at least one neighbor, making accommodations. Have you had any input from the neighbors so far, have you had a meeting to discuss what's coming?
I know Sister Paula has had some neighborly discussions, I'd have to leave that to her to address any issues there.
Our good neighbors are with us this evening, we had an initial conversation about a year ago, as we anticipated this project, and our neighbors actually watched the nineteen fifty-nine building go up. So, you know, our commitment is to minimize disruption, the university has the full intent to extend our walkway across the length of our neighbor's property for their convenience, for students' convenience, and I think historically, being in the middle of a college campus can be challenging, but we work as partners to make sure each of our needs are accommodated. So, we have had that initial discussion, with more to come.
That's great. Further question, so the work on the upper section, I believe the Sister mentioned, is it the highest point in Nashua?
I think the water, I've heard that those water towers are the highest point in Nashua.
Maybe the top of the tower?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's probably that.
Yeah, because I think Sky Mirror, you know, claims that they're the highest point.
Oh, okay.
You can fight over that, but the work on the pavilion, and probably a little bit of expansion on the parking, would that create a situation where you need like a significant retaining wall, or you just grade it?
No, that's a very good question, and actually, that building is shaped that exact way to take advantage of a little bit of a knoll that comes out here. Our first look at that, conceptually, looked like we were going to have about a twelve-foot drop off that building, and need a big retaining wall. Since then, we've looked at grading it, and we can go up to three to one, which isn't too bad, you can even still mow a three to one, and get that down to four feet.
Okay, so, so you don't have a Lowe's kind of wall?
No, 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 we do not want that kind of wall up there, so that's just, you're just building all this wall for what?
Right.
A storage building on top of it, so it's an expensive storage building.
So, you know, I go down there fairly often, and over the years, improvements have been made on South Main regarding crosswalks and so on, the city itself, you know, in our project, we have done a lot of work, we actually put in those bike lanes when we did the sewer project, and, but are you all happy with the pedestrian connections and traffic moving and so on, or is there still a need to do more?
Well, from my perspective, when I walk around campus, probably three or four times a day, as soon as I got to that crosswalk, cars stopped, and so, people are, I think, behaving themselves, I think they're used to the fact that, and this is what we really hoped would be the case, when we started doing the little granite piers and the crosswalks, that people would realize that they're going through a college campus, that they need to think and slow down a little bit, rather than just blasting through, and even the crosswalk to the Learning Commons today, as I pulled up there, students hit the button, and we all stopped, and they got across, and so, it worked, so that was gratifying to see that, you know, the flashers and everything else was working. So, my own experience, I hope that, you know, the experience of everyone there is that the improvements to date have been a positive for pedestrian flow.
So, as I look, and someone, you know, mentioned a traffic report in need and so on, obviously, the city staff apparently are looking at whether there's such, a need for such, but with increased activity at the entrance now, near the intersection of Clement and South Main, I believe, maybe we should look at, how can we make that intersection a little bit more, a little bit safer than it is today? I know there are crosswalks in all directions, maybe something that will help with the movement, attorney movements, and pedestrian movements, and so on.
Okay.
I'll advise my staff to look at it a little bit closely, because it probably doesn't cost a lot more to make it a lot safer than it is.
Very good.
Thanks.
Are there any easements around the tanks and up in, that impact anything around the proposed athletic buildings, or anything that are going to come into play?
Well, the big easement actually is the one that goes down Clement Street, if I can go somewhere back here. From the tanks going down by Bressard Hall, there is a large, like a twenty-foot wide, oh, let me go back to here, from the tanks here, going down this way, you see this driveway here, that's approximately where there's a large easement. way, you see this driveway here, that's approximately where there's a large easement. It goes out to Clement Street, it turns down Clement Street and goes down to South Main then, because you have a large water line underground there.
Right.
And then on our science project site, there's your typical gas line type things. And there's a power line going down the street, but nothing right in our site per se that we're dealing with. Sorry, I'm flipping around.
Nothing that has any major impact on neighbors, like you have to shut and change, you know?
I don't think so. I mean, we're going to have to do, you know, move utilities around and things like that, but really mostly things that affect Riviera.
Right.
As a matter of fact, the electrical lines that feed the athletics start along South Main, kind of go through the exist, the, what will be the science building. So we have to move those. But that just goes up the hill there.
Yeah.
And everything else goes, I think, around.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? No? Great. I appreciate your time and bringing this to us and you giving us a heads up on what's going on and looks exciting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. And we will look forward to working with your staff as we go through this. And I'll go up there and get my little.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's our last item on our agenda, unless anybody has any other discussion items that they want to bring up. Ed?
I talked earlier about the, we, this coming year, when we approach calendar, setting up the calendar for next year, we really do need to look at, we need to find out when the NRPC is going to have their forum meeting. This has happened two years in a row. I went to the last one last year and I missed the, the planning board meeting because they set on the same night. So we need to look at that, if it's possible, to look at it and change our date. They'll never change their date.
Why not?
We could, you know, so that the board can, if they, because they have great stuff for this board. They really do have important stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's usually December-ish timeframe when we look at our calendar.
Right.
So it's available.
Just want to put that on the back of everybody's head.
Yeah.
When is the workshop that you're talking about?
It's May 10th.
May 10th.
It'll be in room 208.
The workshop that we asked, talked about that we needed to have?
Right.
The, yes, sidewalks.
Yeah, if you have any topics you want to discuss, send them on to me. I'm developing a list and a program for that.
Okay.
That meeting.
I will.
Right, I think we already talked about some sidewalk explanation stuff. I think I brought up, and I might have roped you into it, Adam, you weren't here, but, but working on like motion making and stuff like that and other things like that. But if there are other things, yes, and.
Yeah, I had one, but I'll tell them.
Roger, add it on. Okay. Mr. Apucci?
Yeah, I didn't want to, I didn't want to get into it while the applicant was here, but on 19172, the exterior of materials that are being used for the exterior of that building.
Yep.
If we have a situation where there's standard in the industry accepted materials that can be used.
Right.
And we require people just to come in for a cursory approval, that seems like it's, it should, something we should look at changing. Does changing those rules start at our board? Does it start in the planning department? Do we initiate that? Because I hate to see people come for something that we always approve, that's just kind of a cursory thing.
Yeah.
So how would we go about making that change? Would, would initiate from our board to the Board of Aldermen or through the planning department?
No, I'm sitting right next to you.
I'm asking.
Yeah, Roger mine.
That's going to be, that's on my list for discussion on the 10th.
Okay.
That's certainly something I can discuss with Sarah Marchant and others. That seems to be, we can discuss the types of building materials. I can certainly tell you why it was there. Probably tonight's not the forum to do that, but we can certainly have that discussion.
Great, thank you.
All right, we'll put that on our list for the 10th. Okay, great. Anybody else?
Alderman 10.
And I would, I would just echo what Mr. Apucci was saying regarding having people unnecessarily come before the board. And so if there's a review of regulations that we come across, or certainly people on this board have been sitting here a lot longer than I have, if it requires some type of action by the Board of Aldermen, we would , you know, work with the planning department and the legal department, get something in front of them. The other thing I just wanted to mention, I was at the NRPC meeting as well. And I know a number of the Aldermen after that meeting were, I don't want to say excited, but, you know, there was a lot of discussion, conversation about what needs to be done around affordable housing, in particular with density, particular density bonuses, which I don't necessarily understand completely yet. But I think that there will be some changes hopefully to that, that will come down the pike. And I think this board will have a, a big, big part in reviewing that and putting that forward, which will be an important change for affordable housing for people here in Nashville. So hopefully this year, that's something that the planning board will, will also be dealing with.
Great. Anybody else? No? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.